I'll make an announcement.
We are calling to order this regular meeting of the Albany Unified School District Board
Hi, apologies, we're running about fifteen minutes late, we're waiting for one more member
of Education.
so that we have quorum.
Time is 7:13.
Appreciate it, everyone who's here, and hopefully we'll get started around 7:15.
Could we get a roll call, please, for establish quorum?
Thanks for your patience, I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. So, student board members are not here this evening. Trustee Dana Inglis.
Here.
And trustee Khan is also not joining us this evening. Trustee Davidson is not joining us this evening. Vice President Mahoney.
Here.
President Hopwood.
Here.
And Superintendent Stone.
Here.
Thank you.
And also, just to let you know that we've actually postponed, or rather canceled for now, the retreat which was going to take place after this open session. Right, so now we will have the reading of the AUSD mission and vision statement. No student board members to do that, so trustee Inglis and vice president Mahoney will do that.
Yes. The mission of the Albany School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potentials productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Meeting norms. One, maintain a focus on what is best for our students. Two, ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully. Three, endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs in what is best for our students. Four, make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their own points of view, even if one disagrees.
Thank you, and now we will have the pledge of allegiance. For those who would like to participate, please stand.
(inaudible)
Thank you, and now, the session was canceled, so no action taken there. So, we're moving on to item six, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so the motion passes, the agenda passes unanimously. And now, we're moving on to our spotlight, very exciting, Albany Middle School. And we have Principal Mapes here.
Okay.[152.89][152.89](applause) Well, thank you for having us. We have a lot of students here who are eager to talk about their clubs. So, I first want to say thank you, President Hopwood, for having us, and vice president Mahoney, and trustee Inglis, and superintendent Stone, and I can't forget Ms. Julie, thank you. And so, we are here just to talk about three of our thirty clubs that we have at our school. These clubs are student-run with advisors, teacher advisors, who put a lot of time and effort in, and I'm excited to have all of the three club members, please come up with your advisors right now. Come on up. Who's first?
Uh, it's the best buddies.
All right, best buddies, come on up.[166.89][166.89](applause)
Hello, and good evening, thank you so much to the board for having us, we're really excited to be here. I'm one of the supervisors for the Best Buddies Club. It is an international organization, we are one of the very few chapters, I actually looked it up, there are twenty-one middle school chapters in the state of California, and less than half of that in the Bay Area, and we are one of those middle school chapters. And we have been around for about ten years, now at Albany Middle School, as long as I've been working there. And we have a team of officers who meet with us every other week to plan our weekly meetings that take place every Wednesday. And we have lunch in Ms. Coleman's room, and each week, our best buddies come together and they invest, and they build friendships. And we give new opportunities for all students that are part of the club, and really, it's about true inclusion. How do we make sure that Best Buddies is part of all the fabrics of our middle school? So, up here, I have a couple pictures of some of our major events. We do a cookie decorating party every winter together. We also do a Halloween trick-or-treating that happens on our campus, and the best part of that is that all students get to see different classrooms, and also get to tour around the school. And then, for the next slide, we have, last week, we did short film and popcorn at lunch in my room, that was really fun. And then, one of our big, major events of the school year is a fundraiser at Chipotle, where we all gather, we invite the whole school to go with us, and we all walk to Chipotle together, order some food, and just hang out and eat it together. So, it's really, it's really a fun time. And I would like to introduce, well, before I introduce, I just want to see Ms. Coleman want to talk about her experience with Best Buddies.
Yeah, I'm Ms. Coleman, I'm the ESN teacher at the middle school. We have Best Buddies every Wednesday, we love it, we have students from my classroom come in, students not from my classroom, students with disabilities, those without. It makes my students feel included, and gives them a space to hang out, and a lot of our buddy pairs hang out outside of the club time, so they've made, developed real friendships where they're seeking each other out throughout, throughout the week. So, it's really been a great experience to be a part of.
Yes, thank you. I also forgot to add that, yeah, Best Buddies, we help pair one-to-one friendship with students with disabilities and without disabilities. And so, one of our amazing club officers is here tonight. He comes in every other week for meetings on Mondays, and then he's also here every Wednesday at lunch to help facilitate, help facilitate buddy groups, and he also participates as a buddy as well. And what I really appreciate about this officer, who, I'll let him introduce himself, he is always reliable, and he gives us great feedback on what activities will work, and definitely has no problem telling us which activities will not work. So, we really, really appreciate him. I'll let him introduce himself, so can you please tell us your name and your grade?
Hi, guys. I am the one, my name is Zayn. I like Best Buddies because I feel safe, and I can tell my friends my problems, and I, and they help me. Two of my favorite events this year were decorating cookies for the holidays, and walking to Chipotle. We need Best Buddies because non-disabled people get to meet disabled people, and different is okay, and makes the world a better place. Thank you for your time, and have a nice evening.[223.89][223.89](applause)
Okay, now, I would like to have the Black Alliance join up here, come on up, Black Alliance.[226.89][226.89](applause) Okay, awesome, oh, okay, I'm gonna do it, okay, cool. All right, so, along with Best Buddy is also in the supervisor and coordinator for Black Alliance. The Black Alliance started in 2018, and we started as a mentorship program, because at our school, we have a very small, I mean, back then, we had a very small black population. And even though it was so, because it was so small, we're spread out amongst classes as being the one or the only two, one of two, black students in classes. And so, we identified this as a problem, and decided what can we come up with to support it? And so, we started off as the African-American mentorship program, and then our students changed the names to the Black Alliance, all because of TBA. And I have some students up here that are going to talk about their experience, but I also have some pictures here for you guys to check out on some of the things that we do. I am not the only person that runs this program, Mr. Kason, Will Kason, from the high school runs this program with me, and so does Ms. Kim Gray, who's at our middle school. And we come in, we make sure the students are fed, we make sure they're seen, we make sure they're loved, that they're cared for, and then we just organize certain events for them each time. Sometimes, our students participate in the Black History Month celebration, they usually do a performance each year, and then here, we have some pictures of them getting food, and then gathering with the BSU from the high school. And on the next slide, we have some pictures of our end-of-the-year banquet party, which is one of our fun events, we do it as a potluck style, so families get to share various dishes from their cultures inside the African diaspora, and then, we eat together and just have a lot of fun, and kind of like, you know, celebrate at the end of the year. So, I have a couple of students who are going to talk about their Black Alliance experience.
Thank you, school board, for taking the time to listen to us tonight. My name is Ayana Tej Said.
And my name is Love Roy. Me and Ayana are both eighth graders that have been in Black Alliance since sixth grade. If Black Alliance wasn't in Albany Middle School, then I would be very lost, and I wouldn't know how to navigate through middle, middle school.
Seeing lots of non-black people at school is hard, and having community where I can be myself is really nice, or actually, it's amazing. Black Alliance lifts and supports people to be themselves. Having the Black Student Union from the high school come down to talk to us and connect with us is so special to me. When we go to the high school, we will thankfully have people that we know and can connect with.
Thank you again for listening to us. In conclusion, without Black Alliance, we wouldn't be where we are today.
I'm so thankful for being able to speak to you all tonight. Thank you.[271.89][271.89](applause)
By the way, they were so excited to come talk to you guys, so we have like, two more groups that are coming up, Nazia is going to come up.
Hello, my name is Nazia Roy, and I'm a seventh grader here at Albany Middle School. Being one of like, the few black kids in my classes, it was always hard trying to find a way to fit in, but with the Black Alliance meetings at lunch, that helped me find a newer way to connect with peers and teachers, and getting a close relationship. Yeah, that's what I had to say, thank you.[279.89][279.89](applause)
Okay, and we have our last set here.[281.89][281.89](laughter)
Hello, my name is Kennedy Taylor, and this is Michaela.
My name is Kennedy Taylor, and this is Michaela Miles, and we are eighth graders a part of Black Alliance from Albany Middle School. Thank you to the school board for us having us be here tonight.[286.89][286.89](laughter) She has to sit down, she's making me laugh.
I've been a part of Black Alliance since I was in sixth grade, and it has been a big part of my life. Some reasons I love Black Alliance is because it's a way for us, black people, to come together and just have a space that is only for us. Sometimes at school, it can feel like you don't belong or fit in because there isn't much of a diversity at Albany Middle School, so having Black Alliance makes it feel like you have a community, you can relate to one another and not feel like an outlier. At Black Alliance, you get to socialize, learn Black history, help come up with events and potlucks, and last but not least, there's a lot of pizza and food, which the kids at our school really enjoy, and is one of the best parts. At Black Alliance, most of the time, you get to just hang out and make connections with people you didn't even know went to the school. Sometimes, the Black Student Union from the high school comes to join us, when they, when they are there, you get exposed to an older audience, and you get to tell them the drama and receive an older, more experienced high schooler's perspective. There's an older group of girls at Albany High School, a part of the BSU, they have been very helpful with my middle school challenges, and just great people to talk to and lean on when Michaela and I are having challenges at school and need some advice. Overall, Black Alliance has been a big part of my middle school experience, and has definitely helped me feel like I have a community to lean on. Going to high school, I wouldn't know what a black community and support system should be like. Thank you so much to the board for letting me have this opportunity to speak here tonight.[311.89][311.89](applause)
Okay. My name is Michaela Miles, and I am an eighth grader at Albany Middle School. As Kennedy mentioned, I'm a part of, I'm a part of the Black Alliance, which is a community full of caring, supportive people. This is my first year being involved with Black Alliance, and it has truly made me feel more welcome as I adjust to a new school, and a new environment. What I love most about the Black Alliance is the strong sense of belonging and the deep connections we've built with one another. One of the things that makes Black Alliance so special is the variety of snacks everyone enjoys. It's also a place where people feel comfortable and can have great conversations. Sometimes, a group of students from the, from Albany High School gathers, they're sharing stories and having a good time. It's a fun, laid-back environment, where people come together, connect, and enjoy each other's company. I love socializing, having conversations with others, the community is welcoming and supportive, and I always look forward to having great interactions we share. I had fun here, especially the pizza and the snacks. I also love telling the high schoolers about the drama that goes on at the middle school, and most of all, the loving people and caring. Thank you for having me at this board meeting and talking about our experience at the Black Alliance.[334.89][334.89](applause)
Okay, and we have one more, and I want to thank Ms. Fisher for everything she does for our school and our community, you're wonderful.[337.89][337.89](applause) So, I'm going to have Coach Onkit and members of our Science Olympiad club and team, I think, you know, we have a lot of sports teams, and we have some sports clubs, but I think it's also, we branch out into having academic teams, and this is one, this is our first academic team, and I hope we can grow from here. So, Science Olympiad, come on up.[343.89][343.89](applause)
Thank you for allowing us to present. I'm going to let the kids kind of lead the talking. We've been as a club for the past five years now, in AMS, and we've grown the club from forty-five students to almost over a hundred kids who participate in just AMS. High schools participate, about seventy students, and this year, we had about seventy or sixty of the district, I would say. So, have you guys take it away?
Good evening, my name is Megan Kong, and I'm the current secretary and advisor for the Science Olympiad leadership.
My name is Orwin Koche, and I'm the current treasurer and rising president of Science Olympiad.
My name is
It is an international organization. We are one of the very few chapters. I actually looked it up. There are 21 middle school chapters in the state of California and less than half of that in the Bay Area, and we are one of those middle school chapters. And we have been around for about 10 years now at Albany Middle School, as long as I've been working there. And we have a team of officers who meet with us every other week to plan our weekly meetings that take place every Wednesday. And we have lunch in Ms. Coleman's room. And each week, our best buddies come together and they invest and they build friendships. And we give new opportunities for all students that are part of the club. And really, it's about true inclusion. How do we make sure that best buddies is part of all the fabrics of our middle school? So up here, I have a couple pictures of some of our major events. We do a cookie decorating party every winter together. We also do a Halloween trick-or-treating that happens on our campus. And the best part of that is that all students get to see different classrooms and also get to tour around the school. And then for the next slide, we have, last week, we did short film and popcorn at lunch in my room. That was really fun. And then one of our big, major events of the school year is a fundraiser at Chipotle, where we all gather, we invite the whole school to go with us, and we all walk to Chipotle together, order some food, and just hang out and eat it together. So it's really, it's really a fun time. And I would like to introduce, well, before I introduce, I just want to see Ms. Coleman want to talk about her experience with best buddies.
Yeah, I'm Ms. Coleman. I'm the ESN teacher at the middle school. We have best buddies every Wednesday. We love it. We have students from my classroom come in, students not from my classroom, students with disabilities, those without. It makes my students feel included and gives them a space to hang out. And a lot of our buddy pairs hang out outside of the club time. So they've made, developed real friendships where they're seeking each other out throughout, throughout the week. So it's really been a great experience to be a part of.
Yes, thank you. I also forgot to add that, yeah, best buddies, we help pair one-to-one friendship with students with disabilities and without disabilities. And so one of our amazing club officers is here tonight. He comes in every other week for meetings on Mondays. And then he's also here every Wednesday at lunch to help facilitate, help facilitate buddy groups, and he also participates as a buddy as well. And what I really appreciate about this officer, who, I'll let him introduce himself. He is always reliable, and he gives us great feedback on what activities will work, and definitely has no problem telling us which activities will not work. So we really, really appreciate him. I'll let him introduce himself. So can you please tell us your name and your grade?
Hi, guys. I enjoy writing today. I like best buddies because I feel safe and I can tell my friends my problems, and I, and they help me. Two of my favorite events this year were decorating cookies for the holidays and walking to Chipotle. We need best buddies because non-disabled people get to meet disabled people. And different is okay. And makes the world a better place. Thank you for your time, and have a nice evening.
Now I would like to have the Black Alliance join up here. Come on up, Black Alliance. Oh, okay. Let me do it. Okay, cool. All right, so along with best buddy is also in the supervisor and coordinator for Black Alliance. The Black Alliance started in 2018. We started as a mentorship program because at our school, we have a very small, I mean, back then, we had a very small black population. And even though it was so, because it was so small, we're spread out amongst classes as being the one or the only two, one of two, black students in classes. And so we identified this as a problem and decided, what can we come up with to support it? And so we started off as the African-American mentorship program, and then our students changed the names to the Black Alliance, all because of TBA. And I have some students up here that are going to talk about their experience, but I also have some pictures here for you guys to check out on some of the things that we do. I am not the only person that runs this program. Mr. Kason, Will Kason, from the high school runs this program with me, and so does Ms. Kim Gray, who's at our middle school. And we come in, we make sure the students are fed, we make sure they're seen, we make sure they're loved, that they're cared for, and then we just organize certain events for them each time. Sometimes our students participate in the Black History Month celebration. They usually do a performance each year. And then here, we have some pictures of them getting food and then gathering with the BSU from the high school. And on the next slide, we have some pictures of our end-of-the-year banquet party, which is one of our fun events. We do it as a potluck style, so families get to share various dishes from their cultures inside the, the African diaspora. And then we eat together and just have a lot of fun and kind of like, you know, celebrate at the end of the year. So I have a couple of students who are going to talk about their Black Alliance experience.
Thank you, school board, for taking the time to listen to us tonight. My name is Zayana Tej Said.
And my name is Love Roy. Me and Zayana are both eighth graders that have been in Black Alliance since sixth grade. If Black Alliance wasn't in Albany Middle School, then I would be very lost, and I wouldn't know how to navigate through middle, middle school.
Seeing lots of non-black people at school is hard, and having community where I can be myself is really nice. Or actually, it's amazing. Black Alliance lifts and supports people to be themselves. Having the Black Student Union from the high school come down to talk to us and connect with us is so special to me. When we go to the high school, we will thankfully have people that we know and can connect with.
Thank you again for listening to us. In conclusion, without Black Alliance, we wouldn't be where we are today.
I'm so thankful for being able to speak to you all tonight. Thank you.
By the way, they were so excited to come talk to you guys, so we have like two more groups that are coming up. Nazir is going to come up.
Hello, my name is Nazir Roy, and I'm a seventh grader here at Albany Middle School. Being one of like the few black kids in my classes, it was always hard trying to find a way to fit in, but with the Black Alliance meetings at lunch that helped me find a newer way to connect with peers and teachers and getting a close relationship. Yeah. That's what I had to say. Thank you.
Okay, and we have our last set here.
Hello, my name is Kennedy Taylor, and this is Michaela. My name is Kennedy Taylor, and this is Michaela Miles, and we are eighth graders of part of Black Alliance from Albany Middle School. Thank you to the school board for us having us be here tonight. She has to sit down. She's making me laugh. I have been a part of Black Alliance since I was in sixth grade, and it has been a big part of my life. Some reasons I love Black Alliance is because it's a way for us, people, black people, to come together and just have a space that is only for us. Sometimes at school, it can feel like you don't belong or fit in because there isn't much of a diversity at Albany Middle School. So having Black Alliance makes it feel like you have a community, you can relate to one another and not feel like an outlier. At Black Alliance, you get to socialize, learn Black history, help come up with events and potlucks, and last but not least, there's a lot of pizza and food, which the kids at our school really enjoy, and is one of the best parts. At Black Alliance, most of the time, you get to just hang out and make connections with people you didn't even know went to the school. Sometimes the Black Student Union from the high school comes to join us. When they, when they are there, you get exposed to an older audience, and you get to tell them the drama and receive an older, more experienced high schooler's perspective. There's an older group of girls at Albany High School, a part of the BSU. They have been very helpful in my middle school challenges and just great people to talk to and lean on when Michaela and I are having challenges at school and need some advice. Overall, Black Alliance has been a big part of my middle school experience, and has definitely helped me feel like I have a community to lean on. Going to high school, I will know what a black community and support system should be like. Thank you so much to the board for letting me have this opportunity to speak here tonight.
My name is Michaela Miles, and I am an eighth grader at Albany Middle School. As Kennedy mentioned, I am a part of, I'm a part of the Black Alliance, which is a community full of caring, supportive people. This is my first year being involved with Black Alliance, and it has truly made me feel more welcome as I adjust to a new school and a new environment. What I love most about the Black Alliance is the strong sense of belonging and the deep connections we've built with one another. One of the things that makes Black Alliance so special is the variety of snacks everyone enjoys. It's also a place where people feel comfortable and can have great conversations. Sometimes a group of students from the, from Albany High School gathers, they're sharing stories and having a good time. It's fun, laid-back environment, where people come together, connect, and enjoy each other's company. I love socializing, having conversations with others. The community is welcoming and supportive, and I always look forward to having great interactions we share. The Black Alliance has been fun and the most welcoming program I've been to. I had fun here, especially the pizza and the snacks. I also love telling the high schoolers about the drama that goes on at the middle school. And most of all, the loving people and caring. Thank you for having me at this board meeting and talking about our experience at the Black Alliance.
Okay, we have one more. And I want to thank Ms. Fisher for everything she does for our school and our community. You're wonderful. So I'm going to have Coach Onkit and members of our Science Olympiad Club and team. I think, you know, we have a lot of sports teams, and we have some sports clubs, but I think it's also, we branch out into having academic teams. And this is one, this is our first academic team, and I hope we can grow from here. So Science Olympiad, come on up.
Thank you for allowing us to present. I'm going to let the kids kind of lead the, the talking. We've been as a club for the past five years now in AMS. And we've grown the club from 45 students to almost over 100 kids who participate in just AMS. High schools participate, about 70 students, and this year, we had about 70 or 60 kids from elementary kids. So it's a true program that encapsulates almost every level of the district, I would say. So have you guys take it away?
Good evening. My name is Megan Kong, and I'm the current secretary and advisor for the Science Olympiad leadership.
My name's Orin Koosh, and I'm the current treasurer and rising president of Science Olympiad.
My name is Ira Kotakar, and I'm currently the president and advisor for the Science Olympiad leadership. Tonight, we would like to bring up the Albany Science Olympiad Club in this board spotlight.
I bet you all may be wondering what Science Olympiad is in the first place. Science Olympiad is a fun, engaging, and competitive way for students to learn about science. Science Olympiad at Albany Middle School has grown tremendously since its start. We started out with only 54 students, but now we've grown, we've grown to over 120 students. I really like Science Olympiad because it really expands your point of view, and you realize that the world outside your school is bigger than you thought. Students get to go out and compete against unfamiliar people, which I think is pretty amazing.
For me, Science Olympiad has genuinely grown me as a person academically and socially.
I've also met some amazing friends and learned science concepts that I've used in class and that I can use in the future.
Next slide. AMS Science Olympiad has had a great season this year. With the help of amazing coaches and funds, we have won nearly 80 individual medals, are fourth in the Bay Area, and one of the top 10 teams in the state of California. We have consistently been either first or second in regionals. Those are some amazing achievements, and we couldn't have done it without the immense organization, coaching techniques, and motivation.
So this year, we spent about $30,000 on things such as like competition registration, materials, and resources for all of our students. We also provide sweatshirts to show our team spirit. Throughout the season, we went to 10 competitions, four of these being in-person, while the other six were done online at AMS. These competitions often cost between $1,000 to $3,000, along with the expensive food for the day. These competitions helped us prepare for a regional tournament and state tournament for which we qualified for this year.
As a coach for Science Olympiad, Division A Science Olympiad elementary schools, I can say that I truly enjoyed teaching, and it was a very good experience because it was organized and allowed for students to have an early enthusiasm and love in science that can create an even stronger middle school and high school team. So you may be wondering how this benefits Albany students, parents, and teachers at the middle school. Science Olympiad is a team event, so students can learn teamwork, collaboration, and camaraderie. And they can start early by taking part in the elementary Science Olympiad divisions. It also helps enhance your problem-solving skills, especially in events such as builds, where you always are making adjustments to your build. So Albany Middle School as a team earns a lot of recognition when it goes to competitions in their signature hoodies. We proudly bring our school to faraway and high-level competitions, and due to our wins, many schools reach out to our head coaches and ask us about our strategies and techniques. So we are already proving that Albany Middle School has reached far and wide.
So our vision for, well, this year, we started a Science Olympiad program in Cornell, Marin, and Oceanview. And the teams from these schools represented Albany at the Bay Area Regional for elementary, elementary schools. And they placed eighth out of 60 teams, which was a great first run for Science Olympiad Elementary. Now, our first priority is to unify the programs between the elementary, middle, and high school in order to have a larger budget and increase resources in general for each, for all the clubs. We also want to have two to three varsity teams, which can consistently perform well at competitions, and this could also help us become state champions. However, in the end, our overarching goal is to get kids interested and excited about science.
At leadership, we would really like if our school continues to succeed in the future by becoming national champions. This is where the board comes in. The board can help increase our funding through grants so that we can have enough money necessary for resources and competition fees. We would also really appreciate if the board can help students by providing the resources they need. Another way the board can help us is by making Science Olympiad an elective for middle schoolers and high schoolers. I know this is a little far-fetched, but I, but I believe by doing this, students can get the best results possible. With how the club is now, I definitely think that if we expand on its current state, we can absolutely achieve our goal. And with the board's help, we can turn this dream of becoming national champions a reality. And we would like to talk about some of the adults that have been helping us. So Coach Onkit and Coach Patrick are our head coaches, so Coach Onkit's right here. Coach Patrick isn't here right now.
I'd like to thank Ms. Coriella, our faculty advisor, and Principal Maves for all of his help in terms of logistics this year.
And I would like to thank all of our event coaches for taking the time to teach us every week. And make sure to visit our website. The QR code is up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are done. Well, last slide, I just wanted to point out, those are the list of our clubs this year, and we hope to expand that. And basically, it's really about what the students are interested in. So the more, some of these are, you know, they go on every year, but some of them are brand-new, and will go away, and others will come about. So thank you, and I appreciate everybody being here. Students, you did a great job. Advisors, thank you so much, and as always, go Cobras.
No questions, but huge appreciation to all the students who spoke this evening, to all of their teachers and administrators, everyone who supports them, all the adults who volunteer as well. Amazing. So we really appreciate you coming in and telling us a bit more about your clubs. Thank you so much. Does anyone else on the board have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I was just going to comment. Clubs are so important just because of, you know, building that sense of belonging and kids finding their peer groups and them being successful then within a scholastic environment. And you know that from the reading you do, but I think you heard it even better tonight from the students right out of their mouths. They used all those, all those same words, same words without prompting, and so it's really great to see and really great to hear. So thank you to everyone involved.
And next year, we'll have the presentation on the iSearch, so that's next year. Thanks, everybody.
So we are now moving on to student board member reports, and there are no students here to give their report, so we will skip over that. And we are going to have public comment for matters not on the agenda. If you would like to make public comment and you're here in person, please approach the podium. And if you are virtual, you can raise your hand. And I'm not seeing anyone either virtually or in person. So we are now going to move on to approval of the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Before we do, I should say, does anybody have any comment in public or either online or in person? No? Okay, go ahead, sorry Dana.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
I'll second the motion. I was waiting for the dramatic soda opening.
Just like an ad. And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So the consent calendar passes. And we're now moving on to the review and action portion of our meeting, starting with 11A, which is the purchase agreement with CDWG for Chromebooks and Computer Cards for the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program. And I believe that is our chief business official, Linda Wu, and yeah, Eric, who's not here, but go ahead.
Good evening, board president, vice president, and trustee. Thank you for having us and introducing expanded learning programs. Basically, we want to recommend that the board approves a contract for CDWG to buy Chromebooks and also cards to protect those Chromebooks to support additional access, basically, to technology in our after-school learning programs, while also protecting the classroom materials that are being shared on the campuses.
Great, that makes sense. Does anyone in the public have comment on this item, either here in person or virtually? I'm not seeing anyone. And board members, anybody want to have any, any questions or comments about this item? No? Do you have a motion?
I move to approve this item. I move to approve the purchase agreement with CDW-G for Chromebooks and Computer Cards for the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, so that 11A passes unanimously. So we are now going to move on to Chief Human Resources Officer, Munia Gonzalez, to talk about the resolution to reduce certain kinds, certain certificated particular kinds of services for the next school year.
So we, as it says in the backup, we brought the preliminary resolutions in February and March. And then what happens in the period in between is that any impacted individuals have an opportunity to request a hearing in case they dispute their seniority, that sort of thing. And then we bring it back again before May 15th, just to make it final. And then I, I think we talked about this last time when we were bringing the resolution. There are no, there are two impacted employees for the first resolution. There are no impacted employees for the second resolution. Now we're just bringing them together as a whole.
Thank you. Does anyone in the public have comments? I'm not seeing anyone online with a raised hand either. So we could go ahead, and we need to make a motion, and then we'll do a roll call vote because it's a resolution.
Do them together.
Oh, are we going to do, we're just doing 11?
Just the first.
To start with, yeah.
I move to approve resolution 2024-25-21.
I second the motion.
We'll take a roll call.
Okay, student board members are absent. Dana Inklis?
Yes, here.
Trustee Khan is absent. Trustee Davidson absent. Vice President Mahoney?
Yep.
President Hopwood?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. So that resolution passes. Now we're going to move on to the same, but with the reduction of classified services.
Correct. So this one applies to a classified position that was funded by School Care Fundraising Organization, and we're not sure whether it's, that funding is going to be returning, so we're just making this layoff final as well.
Thank you. Take public comment if anybody has a comment, and I'm not seeing any. So anything from the board? We're happy to go ahead with a motion.
I move. Thought we were trading off. I move to approve resolution number 2024-25-22.
I second.
And we'll have a roll call, please.
Student board members are absent. Trustee Inklis?
Yes.
Trustee Khan and Trustee Davidson are absent. Trustee, excuse me, Vice President Mahoney?
Yes.
President Hopwood?
Yes. So that resolution also passes. Thank you. And we are moving on to item 12, superintendent and board member reports.
I had not planned on doing a report tonight because we were going to have our retreat. However, since we are postponing our retreat, I do want to just report out that I was able last night to attend the jazz concert at Yoshi's, where our incredible middle school and high school musicians were performed. It was one of the best performances I've seen, hands down, of any musical experience, and I'm just so amazed and honored to be the superintendent of a school district that has that kind of talent, but also that level of support for our student artists. So it was a really exciting experience. And I do want to also just appreciate our staff for making that happen.
Trustee Inklis, do you have a report?
It is very brief. So the Albany High Art Show is happening tomorrow on the 14th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. The All Choir Variety Show, which is also a great show to see, is happening next Thursday and Friday. And I will say that it may be sold out, so maybe I should be announcing it, but for next year. It's a two-night event, and it's fantastic. PTSA at the high school elected a new board last week, so that's great. And the Board Policy Committee is officially caught up. So that's exciting news. Thank you.
Over at Marin, Spirit Days are in full effect. Costume Day is tomorrow. That's May 14th. That's also known as Halloween 2.0. And May 21st is Decades Day, so dress like your favorite decade. Albany Children's Center, the 17th, Saturday is the open house with face painting games, food, and the Albany Fire Department. And then, you know, the incident of the baseball game between Albany High and Pinnell Valley High School has rightly received a lot of attention. The board does not need me to highlight the terrible actions taken there. I do want to say that I appreciate how the community has come together to unite against this hateful speech and not accepting it as just words and demanding meaningful action against those involved. I'd also like to recognize Superintendent Stone's leadership and clear communication about her expectations for positive action and her commitment to creating a school environment that is free of hate.
Thank you, and I would absolutely second your comments about Superintendent Stone's handling of this unfortunate situation. My report is brief. I attended the Cornell School PTSA meeting, sorry, PTA meeting recently, and that was enlightening, and it's going to be the Cornell Open House this Thursday evening. I think it's at 6 o'clock. It doesn't actually state the time on the calendar, but I'll be there for that. And that actually concludes my report. So we are going to move on to future agenda items. Anybody on the board have anything they'd like to add? Future agenda?
We'll need to reschedule the retreat.
Yep, we will. I don't think there's anything else. And so we are actually going to adjourn this meeting now at 7:46. Thank you so much, everyone.